Just keep breathing in and out.
Please rise.
April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Council is now in session. Warden was Danielson presiding.
Please be seated. Morning, everyone. We respectfully acknowledge that the county of Halliburton is located on Treaty Twenty Michisoggi territory. And in the traditional territory of the Michisoggi and Chipewa nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area. And recognize its original inhabitants as the stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. Can I have a mover in a second or two adopt the agenda today? Counselors Carter and Burton?
Moved by councillor Carter, seconded by councillor Burton. Be it resolved that the April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three Halliburton County Council agenda be approved?
All in favor? That's carried. Could I have a, or sorry, is there anyone who's got a declaration of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof? Hearing none. Could I have a mover in a second or two adopt in minutes from March the twenty-second regular meeting and April twelfth special meeting? Councillor Dayu and Ryle.
Moved by councillor Dayu, seconded by councillor Ryle. Be it resolved that the minutes from the March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting and the April twelfth, two thousand twenty-three special meeting of Halliburton County Council be adopted as circulated?
All in favor? That's carried. In order to accommodate full, full attendance, we are going to have a closed session early in the meeting. So could I have a mover in a second or to move into closed? Counselors Dayu and McKechnie?
Moved by councillor Dayu, seconded by councillor McKechnie. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council enter into closed session for the following reasons. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. And litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board.
All in favor? That's carried? Welcome back to the open session. We do have one resolution coming out of closed. Sadly, we must receive the resignation of our C A O. Could I have a mover in a second or to do that? Councillor Ryle? Councillor McKechnie?
Moved by councillor Ryle, seconded by councillor McKechnie. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council acknowledges receipt of the April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three correspondence from C A O clerk Mike Rutter, notifying council of his retirement effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three?
All in favor? You don't have to sound so happy about it. All in favor? Yeah, I know, I know. Carried. We'll have more to say about that in future days. No business arising from the previous meeting, no delegations. Could I have a mover in a second or two approve the reports and recommendations from the committee of the whole meeting of April twelfth? Councillor Dayu, councillor Carter?
Moved by councillor Dayu, seconded by councillor Carter. Be it resolved that the recommendations from the April twelfth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Committee of the Whole be adopted by Halliburton County Council?
All in favor? That's carried. I don't believe that we have anything from joint accessibility at this point.
No.
So next up is planning. Morning, Mr. Stone.
Thank you, Madam Warren, to the rest of council. So the first report that I'd like to present to you is our planning update. Some exciting, exciting news on the climate change. Front, we're actually receiving a truckload of the food cyclers today. So that program has been, the uptake of it has been quite, quite thrilling. So it was a matter of weeks, maybe two, and all the units were spoken for. And so over the course of a couple of weeks in May, we'll be starting to distribute them here locally. And if you see a transport truck out this afternoon, that's the first shipment. So the other thing too, I want to just point out is that I know council is quite excited to hear from the solicitor with regards to the short-term rental review that they've undertaking. And we, Mike and I have seen the draft of their report and we've asked for a couple of clarifications. But I was promised it would be available early in May. So that's, that's that. So.
So we would have that on our committee of the whole agenda?
I was, I was promised that they could make that date in there if Mike and council would like, we can have them in the audience to answer questions.
Okay. Council, just to ask, are you interested in having them present for that discussion? Okay, that sounds like a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Here you are.
So the next report is the follow-up report to the report that was considered by council at its special council meeting. The matter of the modification to O P A one to the Daisart official plan. Council of directed staff to solicit a resolution from Daisart council. And they dealt with the matter yesterday. And they supported the modification that county council has approved. So the report recommends that county council exercise its authority as approval authority. And direct staff to issue notice of decision of that approval.
Any questions on the planning report in general? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive it? Councillor McKechnie and Shell?
Moved by councillor McKechnie, seconded by councillor Shell. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received planning report P L N thirty-two thousand twenty-three entitled Planning Department update for April two thousand twenty-three for information.
All in favor? That's carried. Next item on the agenda for Mr. Stone is the official recommendation of approval for the carbon holdings application. I want to speak to that.
So yes, it is simply, did I? Did I miss a report? I apologize. So the, the actual approval is, is what council would do with regards to the request of Daisart to modify their plan. So with, with council's approval, a notice of decision will be issued. And that decision is appealable for twenty days. So.
Are there any questions outstanding about that issue? Could I have a mover in a second or then to approve the application? Councillor Ryle and McKechnie?
Moved by councillor Ryle, seconded by councillor McKechnie. Be it resolved that the planning report P L N twenty-eight-two thousand twenty-three concerning file number four-six-two-four-OPA-zero-zero-one, which is in relation to official plan and number one to the municipality of Daisart at all official plan be received by Halliburton County Council for information. That Halliburton County Council approved the policy and schedule modifications to the adopted official plan and that number one to the municipality of Daisart at all official plan as recommended. And attached as attachment one to planning report P L N twenty-eight-two thousand twenty-three. And that Halliburton County Council is the approval authority, direct staff to issue its notice of decision on the final on the official plan amendment, number one to the municipality of Daisart at all official plan. That was adopted by the council for the municipality of Daisart at all. On September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two via bylaw number two thousand twenty-two-nine-seven and modified by county council on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
All in favor? That's carried. Next, there are some more changes by the provincial government to the planning act. If you want to speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, to rest a council. So this was anticipated. I certainly was expecting this for several months now. And so there were rumors held true. And so the province has issued changes, some very fulsome changes to the provincial policy statement. The existing one's been in effect since two thousand and two. And it, and it, sorry, two thousand and twenty. And this one again is really being changed to promote the streamlined planning approvals to allow for more homes to be built in Ontario. Some significant changes will affect I, and I'm quite excited by them. So some of the more significant changes really deal with the timely examination of settlement areas, their modification and their expansion. It allows for local councils and regional councils to actually enact changes to settlement areas without as much justification or as much time to the review process. The existing structure for settlement area expansion would require comprehensive review to be undertaken by the municipality. And that has been that has been removed from the draft provincial policy statement. The other thing too, that will have some significance for the local municipalities as well as the counties. They're, they're loosening up the restrictions for rural development. So there may be greater opportunities for this area to look at rural subdivisions. And to allow for more consensus in the rural area as well. So if you were to look at the rest of southern Ontario, there's some, some grave concerns with those types of policies in primary agricultural areas. So I anticipate there will be some modifications to that. But in more rural areas or more northern communities, there'll be a fair bit of flexibility coming our way to allow for you know, improvements to settlement areas to, to allow for some additional growth to carry on. The other thing too, that's interesting, and again, really didn't affect this areas. The province is moving to sort of amalgamate a number of their provincial plans into one planning document. So the plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe is going to go by the wayside. So there's been a lot of fanfare over that with development in the Oak Ridge's marine. That's going to be rolled into this new provincial policy statement. So the province again is trying to streamline things in such a way that they can move. Municipalities can move quicker to bring about strategic growth in their, in their communities. So if you would like, I have appended the red line revision of the planning act and the provincial policy statement, and I am happy to go line by line through those documents with you.
Councillor Carter?
Right. Sorry, you know, and obviously I don't think we should do it right now, but I think that we should have a discussion where you, where you could point out, not, not necessarily every difference, but the differences that really affect us.
Yeah.
The most because I, this is a very significant change in, in provincial policy. And I have a second question that I can.
Well, and just to add to your, you know, your desire for us to go over it, I would like Mr. Stone to take a very close look at it and ensure there are no negative impacts to us or, or things that we see as challenges. Bring that to our attention. And you know, if, if we need to make a submission, it's there's a consultation process involved here. Councillor Dayu?
Yeah, I concur. And the ongoing balance that we have discussed here at this table so many times between preserving our natural environment and encouraging healthy housing opportunities for, for our people is one that for me is forefront. And I'd be grateful to hear your impressions and everyone's on how do we strike that balance? Is there anything about this new policy statement that puts that in jeopardy? And if there is, what, what are our powers to make sure that the balance continues to be struck?
I fear that there are few powers here, but that remains to be seen. Council, councillor Carter and then Mr. Stone?
So my second question was last Thursday, as everybody knows, a number of things hit the news. So this this got somewhat lost, but I received a, a letter from M P P. And I'm not, unfortunately, Mayor Burton and Mayor Ferry aren't here. I'm not sure if it was sent to all the mayors.
I received asking for land inventory?
Yes, and to the county. So I was just wondering if that, you know, I thought it was special, but now I found that I'm not. But I've just I, I was just wondering, I was just wondering if, you know, that was also received at the county level. And if we're doing something about it and whether we should just do it as one county response.
Well, that my first reaction to it was that it was a duplication of work that they were asking for that I think that there's already been a lot of work done to consolidate all available land in the county. And if I'm not mistaken. Do you have that information?
Yes, madam, Madam Warren, we have been previous efforts, I think, through the housing corporation that we've been, I believe Mike has actually asked that of the CEOs to collect information on vacant lands that are municipally owned and county owned. So we have that information available. That specific letter that councillor Carter is referring to hasn't filtered down to my desk yet. So, but we will act on it quickly.
So can we look to the county to respond on behalf of all four municipalities?
So, so I found out about this on Monday when we had our C A O's meeting. So I hadn't, apparently it's a formal form that has to be filled in and it's by municipality. So I'm not sure we would actually have the ability to do it. But I know each of the C A Os has, has made it a priority and, and will be responding. But my understanding is there's a actually a ministry form that has to be filled in. I'm not sure we would have the ability to do that, nor the ability to decide which of your properties might be available for development or development suitable. So I, I, I'm not sure that we can fill it in. I, we've had that conversation. You know, we've been gathering that information for a while to support the, the seven and seven initiative and any other potential opportunity that comes along. But we've really been looking at it from the county property perspective as opposed to properties. You know, we've asked for that information from the local municipalities, but in terms of reporting, we've only ever reported on a, on county.
I have some concerns about the request and how that information is going to be used and whether, you know, our, our desires for development here in Halliburton County would be superseded by the province in some way. Quite honestly, I guess I want a little bit more knowledge about how that not, that information is going to be used. Councillor Ryle?
You know, this is a question I usually ask on a regular basis. And that is when you're looking at the kind of properties that we have available, which are predominantly rural properties. Is there anything further in terms of policies, guidelines or restrictions set on properties and, and the septic or sewage challenges that might be incurred with, with non-service property?
This is part of the changes that are being proposed in this item number thirteen point three.
Okay.
Any other questions about this item? Councillor Carter?
So just to get back to this land availability thing is fine that if the, if the county can't fill out the form, but could we at least all work together? And come up with, and come up with the list? Because, you know, it's a lot of the land that we end up owning and at the municipal level is because of taxes. So, you know, we've got a lot of, a lot of places that are six feet by nine feet. Probably not available for development, but you know, that's right. Can't even fit a cell tower on it. But the, you know, it's, we should at least work together to have a consistent response across the county as to, as to, you know, what is suitable land or so on.
I, I, well, it sounds to me like the C A Os are, have put their heads together on this and hopefully we can hear back at, at our next meeting about how this is going to be handled. Mr. Stone?
Just, thank you, Madam Warren, to rest a council to respond to councillor Dow's comment about balance. So exciting, exciting news. Part of the changes that are happening often deal with legislation first, policy second, and then the regulations to implement those policy changes come third. And so on the environmental registry of Ontario now, there's regulations that deal with site plan control. And the province has moved away from sort of granting exemptions to all residential development under ten lots for site plan control. And they've heard many of the sort of rural and cottage country municipalities. And so they're introducing regulations that will allow for site plan to be applied to shoreline properties. So that's an exciting development. As, as I've said, as council has experienced that the rapid pace of change. So the next big policy development that we're anticipating will be the new heritage feature policies or natural heritage policies. And we expect the province to issue those policies next month. So you'll have some more documents to consider then. So thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive this report? Councillors Carter and Dayu?
Moved by councillor Carter, seconded by councillor Dayu. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received planning report P L N thirty-one-two thousand twenty-three entitled proposed changes to Bill ninety-seven Planning Act, Provincial Policy Statement and the Helping Home Buyers Protecting Tenants Act for information.
All in favor? That's carried? Thank you, Mr. Stone. Next are a number of administration reports. The first is the correspondence summary listing. Did any member of council have a comment or concern or wish to support correspondence? Hearing none. Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive the correspondence listing? Councillors McKechnie and Shell?
Moved by councillor McKechnie, seconded by councillor Shell. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council acknowledged receipt of C L K dash zero eight dash two thousand twenty-three regarding the correspondence listing for the period of March ninth, two thousand twenty-three to April twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
All in favor? That's carried. Next on the agenda is a rail trail status report for which there, I believe there is none today. But we might look to have a discussion or a little bit of an update on the rail trail. Maybe at an upcoming meeting, committee of the whole. That'd be great. So next are finding the year-end reserve allocations. Good morning.
Good morning. We have now finished our audit and are ready to close twenty twenty-two. The county finished the year with a net cash surplus of two hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirteen cents. I've included a number of transfers that I'm recommending to and from reserves in order to close twenty twenty-two within my report. And I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Are there any questions about the recommendations that are being made? Hearing none. Could I have a mover in a second for them to receive and approve the recommendations, councillors, Dayu, Carter?
Moved by councillor Dayu, seconded by councillor Carter. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the staff report on the two thousand twenty-two year-end reserve allocations and approves the transfers to and from reserves as presented within the report.
All in favor? That's carried?
Thank you.
Thank you. That was easy.
Yeah, it was easy. Just note also the auditors will be here, may council, to present the audited statements to you.
Okay, look forward to that. Next up is Chief Wade to talk about a little change in ambulance procurement.
Good morning, Warden, members of council. I'm just an update. We, we've already placed our order for ambulance in January. And I've inquired in the past about brush bars in the front. Just because of animal strikes, they didn't have the engineering in the past. And to just do an aftermarket brush bar doesn't really work because you cover the sirens, you cover the lights. But when I inquired again, because we had two animal strikes recently this spring. They do have the capability to engineer that now. So I asked for pricing on that to include in new ambulance. And as you can see, the the cost was just over eight thousand for that. In the meantime, during that conversation, we also discussed moving the overhead bar that's in the center. People were hitting their heads on it. So we decided if we move it to the side, it would be less of a risk to bump your head. And at the same time, they informed me that in the past, they've included the deckling in the cost of the ambulance, but now it's an additional charge. So with all that, I'm just proposing that we get all these items at a cost of just over twelve thousand and we utilize reserves to pay for this.
Questions or comments, councillor Shell?
Just a quick question while we're talking about ambulances and you've said you've ordered one. Can you just remind county council and the public how long it takes from the time that you are ordering an ambulance until it's actually delivered?
In the past, we would order in the fall and receive it in the spring. Our past ambulance, the two ambulance deliveries were delayed approximately a year. So we didn't get them till this spring. We were supposed to get them last spring. I'm, the ambulance we have ordered in January, I'm I'm told possibly September. So it has been, it used to be fairly quick. We could count on it at a certain time, but with supply chain issues, it's, it's a little bit of a unknown.
Believe in September is an improvement over last year's order.
Definitely.
Just a comment with regards to the bumper in particular, that it's a perfect example of how an ounce of prevention equals a pound of cure. I mean, this could really help us to keep our fleet on the road. So it's, it's a good thing.
And the other, the other thing I looked into with it, if I may, is that with the addition of, I, I don't think we can completely eliminate it, but if there was a larger, a very heavy front end strike. If the airbags are deployed, my understanding, and I'm not an insurance adjuster, but they write the vehicle off. So this can help prevent those airbags from deploying.
Can I have a mover in a second or then to approve this additional expense, councillor Shell and Dayu?
Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Dayu. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives the April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three staff report. E M S dash zero three dash two thousand twenty-three requesting changes to the new ambulance ordered in January, two thousand twenty-three. And that Halliburton County Council direct staff to proceed with the purchase based on the changes outlined in the April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three staff report. And finally, that these changes be funded from reserves.
All in favor? That's carried? Just don't, don't go away for a second. And, and thanks for that, that report. I just wanted to take a minute to mention that this upcoming Monday is first responders day. And I know that all of our first responders have truly stepped up to the plate to organize open houses at each one of their facilities. Everyone, the public is in, is invited to drop in, members of council too. And all of those efforts to welcome the public have been made on top of the regular duties of, of all of our first responders. So there's, there's not enough words to appreciate the work that's gone into that. So rain or shine on Monday, our O P P, community paramedics and each of our municipal fire departments are all participating in hosting open houses, meeting and greeting residents and sharing information about programs and services that are being offered across the county. They're letting folks know about jobs and volunteer opportunities that are available and reminding people about the benefits of emergency preparation. This is a day that also honors nurses, doctors, emergency medical technicians and emergency managers. Military personnel, medical evacuation pilots, dispatchers. But it's acknowledged that some of those folks can't participate in, in Monday's events. But that means there's no less gratitude for the work that they've done. So just briefly on behalf of county council, my congratulations to Uh so just briefly on behalf of county council, my congratulations to all of our first responders. And and to you, to all of of our E M S uh staff. My congratulations and heartfelt thanks for everything that you do for all of us here in Halliburton County. Thank you. Um, next is economic development. Morning, Mister O'Val.
Uh, good morning, Warden and members of council. Um, just in front of you today is uh what we hope is the final version of our economic development strategy. As as you probably remember, about a couple of weeks ago, myself and our consultant presented the draft strategy for feedback from this group. Um, we made changes based on uh the input and suggestions that were made at that time. Um, and then we've subsequently finalized the document and it's in front of you today for uh adoption and it would basically be our our guiding document for uh this term of council.
Questions or comments about the strategy? And I'm much appreciated for some of the changes that have been made that were recommended at the last meeting. Any questions, any comments? Could I have a move in a second or then to officially adopt the economic development strategy? The answers Ryle and Dayu?
Moved by councillor Ryle, second by councillor Dayu. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received the April twenty six, two thousand twenty three report on the Economic Development Strategy, two thousand twenty three to two thousand twenty six. Further, that Halliburton County Council adopt the Economic Development Strategy as attached as Schedule A to this report. And further, that the document be used as a reference and guiding document for future economic development plans in Halliburton County.
All in favor? That's Gary. Thank you, Scott. So next are reports in minutes from external boards and agencies. Uh first up is the uh are the minutes from the Halliburton Corther Pine Ridge Health Unit. Anything that you'd like to point out or highlight?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. Uh one, like you said, it's attached to the to the to the agenda. And uh it this was very, very productive. There's both three or four things that uh that were stressed when we were there. Um, when it comes to infectious diseases, they're trying to get the uh the overall immunization for young people back online. Uh it it the the goal for that is to get it the twenty three, twenty four season. Uh so that uh our our young people are protected from the polio's and and the bad things that happen. Um COVID nineteen, uh as far as I can figure and what was explained, it's not gone, but it's under control. It's something that we can, we can now manage. And for those people who are are following up with their boosters. Uh if you did not get the fourth and fifth booster, uh they are now being targeted along with the sixth one specifically to Omicron. And it's not necessary that you take them in a sequence. If you miss one, you just take it and you can you can make up for it. They've also uh looking at a customer experience standard. Uh, it's it's in better detail in 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 the summary, but what it consists of is a pledge which has several promises uh that uh that the unit's going to make to its clients. And it also has a standard which consists consists of ten expectations and how staff and management are to treat their customers, which includes themselves interacting with each other. So that 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 was a good thing. You also mentioned the Omicron, the the opioid crisis. Um, there there's very much concerns here because as as we all know, they are in less than scientific manufacturing of those things and a lot of deadly byproducts are added to what is being sold on the streets. Um and and consequently, there is a a a definite advice to not not use alone if you're going to go that route at all. Okay, the police are handling the actual um of control of the distribution and the health unit is dealing more so with hopefully uh reducing consumption and and dealing with the aftermath of of how to help people get away from that particular challenge. Um, the twenty three budget was kind of interesting. Uh and that uh in Halliburton County, we saw an increase in our contribution by sixty nine thousand dollars. Whereas Corthalakes and, excuse me, Northumberland and Corsa Lake, Ortholakes had reductions of thirty three thousand six and thirty three thousand five respectively. And the reason for that is because we're growing and it's being redistributed based on population. So although ours went up, uh our contribution, which is roughly six hundred thousand is one quarter what each of those contribute. So both Northumberland and um Ortholakes contribute four times what we do. So we're we're not, we're not taking the necessary burden. And then the last thing that they're proposing is is one of the things that that they're trying to do is to uh improve the overall functioning of health units in general. And so the idea is to establish or at least what was put forward was the the idea to establish two committees, a governance committee and a finance and audit committee. Um, that yeah had some pretty robust discussion. Uh, our health unit uh wanted to know if it was absolutely necessary to have two separate committees as opposed to, is there an alternate way to handle it? Uh, the idea of improving and managing wasn't the issue. The idea was how to go about doing it. So that is going to uh be brought up in an additional meeting, whether or not it's going to be focused on that particular issue or it'll be part of something else. I don't know. And that's kind of sort of where it sits.
Any questions for councillor Ryle, councillor Carter?
So by what you said, I I understand the budgeting process of, you know, it's done by population. So if it is done proportionally by population, um then each group or each sector should receive the same level of service. And that is not always the situation that occurs here. We uh, you know, we often are having to go down and pick up vaccines uh on our own and a number of other things. So I'm fully prepared that we pay our fair share. But if it's going to be divided by population, it it has to be for the same level of service. If we're not going to get the same level of service, we shouldn't be paying the same amount as other locations.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, and I think that's one of the reasons why these committees were recommended as to how to go about standardizing delivery and making sure at the end of the day that what you're getting for your money is proportionate to to what it is you're trying to deliver. And so um there is more discussion to happen on that.
Thank you. A point in time, councillor McKecney.
Yeah, I have a lengthy report here and I'm going to forward it all to you today. Okay, so you'll be able to read it over tonight or sometime.
Thank you, sir. Uh with respect to the Wardens Caucus, um nothing to report other than we will be having a meeting on the eleventh of May. So we'll have more to uh more information for you then. Uh joint social uh and housing services. Councillor Carter.
So I I think we had a a good meeting last time. I think the group is is still uh defining what its role is and how it's going to uh work together. Um, I have had uh meetings with staff and with the uh the co-chair of the uh or the chair of the uh of of the group from uh the Corthalakes. And uh, you know, we are committed that this be a useful committee and that we spend very little time, you know, many committee meetings are spent with the majority of time talking about the statutory reports. And you know, the finance and everybody gets up there and, you know, eighty five percent of the meeting's time has been taken up by just doing the statutory reports. And we want to take a very, very different view of that and try to compress all those reports so that they're provided to everybody at the um at the at the, you know, prior to the meeting. And if anybody has questions, we sort of get them out of the way and we don't spend time going over all the reports. No no disrespect to all the staff who prepares the reports. But the thing is, is we want to be spending the time debating and discussing that those things that we can control and can contribute to the community. So we're working with staff to try to prepare how that exactly happens. But I think everybody is committed to making this a useful committee that will provide services to the whole population.
Thank you, sir. Um, under health uh professional recruitment, um I I don't have a lot to report and I I must confess that there needs to be better uh coordination and communication between myself and our recruiter. I do understand that there's something being planned and that's a uh sort of an appreciation night for the uh for the doctors. Um, as well as maybe a little bit of a a boost for some interested parties who may uh wish to join our our family health team. Um, but I I really can't give you any more details other than that's in the planning stages. I think it can is, has there been a date set or? Be nice to know that. Thank you. Um, anything from the library board?
Yeah, so I'll I'll start off with, so the library, obviously the minutes before you, um the library board policy committee has been updating the policies to make them um more in line with post COVID. Um, you'll see in the minutes that we receive funding from the Halliburton Rotary to support the Canopy streaming service. And if you haven't checked that out, I suggest you do. It's free. Um, the library C B C E O Chris Stevenson is planning a branch tour for all of the library board to check with each of the branches. And most importantly, I want to acknowledge the passing of our library board member, Tim Casey. Uh, he was a member of the library board as well as a former courier driver and um brought a lot of knowledge to the board and was an extremely fun and and a wonderful man. And I just wanted to acknowledge that. Um, it's it's Chris was actually just in the process of having um a recognition made for him to give him this weekend. So I've asked that we would pass that off to the family so that it doesn't get lost in transition.
Thank you for that and our and our condolences to the Casey family. Uh, could I have a mover in a second or then to receive the uh external reports, councillors McKecney and Carter?
Moved by councillor McKecney, second by councillor Carter. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the following. The March sixteenth, two thousand twenty three Board of Health approved minutes, the Board of Health meeting summary report for April twentieth, two thousand twenty three. And the March eighth, two thousand twenty three Halliburton County Public Library Board approved minutes and the draft minutes from the April twelfth, two thousand twenty three meeting.
All in favor? It's carried. Next is the land division. Back to you, Mister Stone.
Thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of council. Uh, the Land of Aging Committee this month dealt dealt with, reviewed and approved five applications. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions about the uh the land division activity? I would ask, I'm not sure. I I know that we put out a a call for a new member on the land division. I'm not sure what the closing date is or whether we're having any success there.
Yes, Madam Warren, to rest of council. So the advertisement went out uh earlier this month and we're hoping to have uh some closures to that uh at the end of May. I haven't heard yet if we've had any applicants, uh but I will check into it. Uh, and update if I'm at a committee hall, I can update uh the committee then.
So the closing date for receiving applications is the end of May?
No, no, no. Uh, uh, it's uh mid-month. So, okay.
Thank you. Could I have a move in a second or then to receive the land division report? Councillors Dayu and Shell?
Moved by councillor Dayu, second by councillor Shell. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received the planning report P L N twenty nine dash two thousand twenty three entitled land division activity report for April two thousand twenty three for information.
All in favor? That's carried. External boards and agencies, um councillor Burton is not here to report on good roads. I have not attended uh yet an E Y R N meeting. Uh, there is a meeting, I believe, scheduled in May. Uh, is there anything that's that you're aware of that? Need to tell councils?
Uh, I don't think so. Um, I know that E Y R N will be coming and doing their uh cell project update on the uh at the June council meeting so that um they'll they'll be doing that. Um, in the meantime, I know that uh you're getting lots of questions about five G and and safety code six and other things. So we are looking to um bring a uh someone who has some knowledge or expertise in that. We just have to arrange it. Um, and we're hoping to bring them to a meeting between now and then. And uh and and we will make sure that the local councils be are are all aware of that meeting and and so that uh they can watch as well. And and um, you know, I I think that um, we want to give as much information as possible. I guess even though in my understanding is health, uh the health effects are not to be considered as part of the land use uh authority uh considerations, uh but we know that that people ask a lot of questions in that regard. So we're we're going to try and get as much information as we possibly can for you.
Well, we look forward to that because there are quite a few questions that have that have come up at different council meetings about that. So and I'm glad to hear that we're inviting all members of council across the county. Uh, next is the Poverty Reduction Roundtable and councillor Fury is not here to give us any updates there. Under other business, we have the calendar. Are there any errors or omissions? Councillor Shell?
Just noticing, I think Victoria Day will be a holiday Monday. Is that not the twenty second? It's showing Memorial Day on the twenty ninth. I just want to make sure that people realize that this that the office isn't open on Victoria Day, which is a Canadian holiday.
If we we use an American calendar, so yeah.
Yeah, just I just caught that and just thought, just so the people were aware it was closed, that's all.
Thank you. Good, good catch. Uh, so we are into the bylaws, um the first of which is the bylaw to repeal the old shoreline preservation bylaw. Um, was there anything that you wanted to?
Just given one one last chance to change his mind. Um, no, I'm bidding. Uh, the when we, council will recall that the previous council passed a bylaw um that we wanted to send out to the local councils for consideration. Um, when they were uh debating whether or not to delegate authority to the county for the to provide the service. When when one municipality didn't do that, we we passed a different bylaw that was geographically based. So applying to three uh communities in the county. Um, what we neglected to do as part of that process is is actually repeal the the original bylaw. So this is just simply repealing that original bylaw um that uh that wasn't necessarily specific to any geography. It it applied to the entire county. So anyway, it's just a housekeeping matter and I apologize, we we missed that.
It it did send off the odd alarm bell in a couple of mine. So glad, thank you for the clarification. So could I have a mover in a second or to repeal that bylaw, councillors, Carter and Dayu?
Moved by councillor Carter, seconded by councillor Dayu. Be it resolved that bylaw four one seven four being a bylaw to repeal shoreline preservation bylaw four one two three be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed and sealed the corporation be a fixed.
All in favor? It's carried. Uh, next is a bylaw to authorize agreement for pavement markings on county roads. Could I have a mover in a second or? Councillor Shell and McKecney?
Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor McKecney. Be it resolved that bylaw four one seven five being a bylaw to authorize an agreement with Trillium pavement marking for the two thousand twenty three supply and application of pavement markings on county roads be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed and sealed the corporation be a fixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Is there any notice of motions? Hearing none, could I have a mover in a second or uh for the confirming bylaw? Councillor Dayu, second by councillor Carter.
Moved by councillor Dayu, seconded by councillor Carter. Be it resolved that bylaw four one seven six being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the April twenty six, two thousand twenty three meeting of Halliburton County Council be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed and sealed the corporation be a fixed.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, could I have a motion to adjourn? Councillor McKecney, seconded by councillor Ryle.
Moved by councillor McKecney, seconded by councillor Ryle. Be it resolved that the April twenty six, two thousand twenty three meeting of Halliburton County Council be adjourned.
All in favor? That's Gary. Thank you.